That's a good job.
Call the special board meeting to order on Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. Do we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. So move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to business, 101 personnel. I need a motion for the approval of a resolution of claim from employees against Adams 14. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on, I need a motion to move into executive session. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
You have to call the motion, Mr. President.
The numbers.
The numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, for moving into executive session. Where in the hell did I just see it?
It's on the blue sheet.
Blue sheet.
It's here, doesn't it? Doesn't it have it? Is yours having it?
Right here.
Well, okay, under Colorado revised statute 24-6-402 foresee confidential matters. Finalizing questions for board vacancy interviews. Please have a minimum of your top...
That's all we need to make.
Okay. Okay, need a motion? So move. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, we will be moving into executive session at 5:32. Okay, I bring this special meeting to order on Tuesday, October 18th, to order at 6:01. We are here to try to interview, hold interviews for the filling of the vacancy of the Director of the Board of Education. As we discuss this, we have three candidates. You will be given questions. One will come in for their interview, the other two will sit in the community room and wait in their turn. I don't know how we want to do this to see who goes first because that's always, somebody always feels they're a little nervous. I don't know if we'll have a lottery or how we do it, but we'll find some. Just want to inform you as you take on this position, just want you to be reminded that there are special needs to being a board member. First of all, the first requirement is that there's two board meetings every month, the second Tuesday of the month and the fourth Tuesday of the month. But besides those two boards meetings, there are many, many board meetings that we could be possibly holding, or work studies. And it's a dedication. Are you going to be able to dedicate yourself to this for 13 months to doing all these things here? Because you're, it's very important, and you must remember that there's no pay for this position. You're volunteering because you care about our students, you care about our community, and I hope you're here to try to make a difference for our community and for our students. So with that, is there any questions before we get started by any candidate? I guess, how do we figure, so the first candidate, do we want to go alphabetically or do we just want to randomly?
I think that's how they have it.
Alphabetically? Okay.
It's, uh, where's your blue? Right here.
Okay, so at this time, I need a motion to accept the nomination for Joseph Driling to fill the vacancy.
No. That's when we pick him. We just need to say, we're gonna, we're gonna interview Joe Driling first, and the other two candidates need to go into the room back over there. The community, I guess they call it a community? Yeah, she'll take you. Pocahontas.
Okay, Joe, what we will do is that we will ask you eight questions. You will have three minutes to respond and then move on, so just there. Each board member will start off with myself, president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer will ask you the questions. And once again, three minutes, and Monica will have the clock up there to let you know. Yeah, okay, the first question, number one, why do you want the position of board member in this district?
I feel that I possess the leadership qualities to sit on the board and be a teammate with the other four on this board. I think having a fresh view and fresh eyes can help the board and help the school district immensely. That's why I want to be on this board.
Connie?
Describe the board's role as it relates to the superintendent's role in the district.
The superintendent is our only employee. The board must focus on policies to improve student achievement and set the vision for the district. The superintendent is a CEO and actually runs the district. May I add to that? Do I have time?
Timmy?
Do you have more?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The superintendent sets the tone, the direction. Our superintendent, Dr. Breggo, has to have qualities of being a good leader, a good listener, a great communicator. We must, as a board, working unison with the superintendent to achieve our goals and vision of the district. Thank you.
Timmy?
So legislation establishes state policy. To what extent would you like to be involved in legislative activity?
I would like to take a big part in that. We need to know from the state level where we're heading, where we're going, what kind of curriculum that is set. We have some of our schools that aren't performing well, and I really don't believe that it's because we have bad students or bad teachers or bad leadership. I think there's some sort of, you know, language, you know, we have a lot of Hispanic kids in the, in the district, and I feel we must bring our kids up, you know, to speak on English at an earlier age. And I think we need to talk with the state about helping us to achieve that goal.
Harvest?
How much should the board seek out the views of teachers and other school employees?
We must have a line of clear communication with the staff, with everyone that's involved, parents, teachers, students. The lines of communication must be open. We have to have, our teachers and staff need to relate to us what their concerns are and what's going on. They are our eyes and ears in this district. We can't be everywhere at every time. So we must work with the superintendent to make sure they're heard and their concerns are heard. If we want to make change, we need to convince staff to be part of that change. It's imperative. If, if they're not part of the change, then it won't be accepted.
Okay, go on. What would you intend that your major contributions as a board member in this school district?
I can contribute leadership. I have, I currently sit on the planning commission board for the city. I am a deputy director for Special Olympics of Colorado. I also sit on the board of directors for the Adams County Orphans Fund. I believe I possess the ability to communicate and provide leadership to team with the four of you on this board to be effective.
Connie?
I'll ask my friends. I got it, I got it, I got it. I got it. What is the best way for the Board of Education to be sure it stays on target?
We need to look at student scores, we need to look at how our teachers are teaching curriculum, how our teachers interacting with their students. Like I previously said, looking at the scores of our students is not a great indicator of how our school district is doing. And I believe communication is a key to that, and being transparent. And everyone needs to have the same vision and goal.
Timmy?
So if you have a decision to make, how do you go about making that decision?
I sit back and I look at logically. Sometimes it wouldn't be the most popular decision, but it has to be the decision that is the good for all. And that's how I approach everything in my life.
Harvest?
Do you like to try to get people to change? If yes, why and how?
I do like to talk with people and hopefully change the way they feel or their attitudes, but they need to buy into the curriculum, they need to buy into what the vision and goal is of this board and of this district. They must follow chain of command and must realize that the superintendent is their top of the chain of command. We may get a lot of negative information fed to us, but we need to use that negative information and use it to drive continued improvement for this district. Every comment, every suggestion needs to be looked at, and we need to have everybody involved with the, with that decision process.
Okay, Joe, we'd like to, is there anything you would like to tell us about your visions of the school or the district, the community?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rola. I feel personally that we need to commit to the vision for high expectations for our students, and we need to have high quality instruction from our teachers. We need to define clear goals toward that vision. That's our responsibility as a board. We must have strong, shared beliefs and values with our superintendent. We have to make every, we have to have our students have every possible way to learn and achieve success. If our kids don't succeed, we have failed as a board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, okay, I guess you can go if you want, Joe, away the committee. Moving on, who's second? Go ahead, Andrew, Monica. I'd just like to remind you that there will be a total of eight questions asked, and you will have three minutes per question to elaborate on each question. The order will be that I will give a question, then Ms. Quintana will give a question, and then Mr. Archuleta will give one, then Mr. Thomas, and then we start the procedure. So at this time, my first question to you is, why do you want the position of a board member in this district?
I think growing up here in the community and graduating and being involved in certain programs throughout high school, one thing I was told is, go off, get your education, come back and get involved. Didn't want to go off to college, wanted to stay here with my friends, party, but I had people pushing me, go to college, Commerce City isn't leaving, it'll be here when you come back. And I left, I went to college, sure enough, came back, Commerce City was still here. And at that time, I was like, since then, my passion has been giving back to youth, been working in Trinidad, giving back to the Y, coming home, working with the city, Commerce City, and then working for the District 14 even for a short time. So now with me in a different district, I want to continue to serve my community, continue to serve my students. To this day, I still see my students and it's, Mr. LaCru, where are you at, where are you at? You know, and I'll be back, I'm, I'm coming back. And this is a way for me to serve my community and serve my students and help move forward the changes that need to be made within this district.
Okay, Ms. Archuleta? Connie? I'm sorry, Connie, I look to my right. Mrs. Quintana?
Describe the board's role as it relates to the superintendent's role in the district.
Well, one is, it's not my job to tell the superintendent what he needs and what he doesn't need to do. He already, he has, he should have a vision and some goals, and I think it's our job as a board to hold him accountable to those goals, to the stuff that he has promised coming in to the, the changes he has, the promises he has made to us to get our district back in the standing we need to be, is to hold him accountable for those, to hold him accountable to the promises he has made to our community as a superintendent coming in. And if he isn't make, following through with his promises, it's time to ask questions and see whether he's still the fit for our community. He has a history of creating change, hopefully he can continue to do that here within 14. But it's our job within the board to make sure he follows his goals and stays on path to make sure our community, our students, our teachers have what they need for these students to be successful.
Ms. Archuleta?
So legislation establishes state policy. To what extent would you like to be involved in, in the legislative activity?
I think that is a big part of our job as a board member. When they create policy at the state level, it is our job as a board member to be informed, know what's going on, so we could come here and make sure our community's informed, our teachers are informed, our families are informed, so that we could better serve these, our students. If we're not informed and not getting the word out, you know, bills can be passed without our, our knowledge and not knowing what's going on, that's going to affect our students, that's going to affect our community, that's going to affect our teachers. And we need good teachers to stay here and know that our board is doing what they can for, for them.
How much, how much should the board seek out the views of teachers and other school employees?
I think that should be handed down, they're just as important as our parents in this community. In fact, some of our staff are parents in our community. Why wouldn't we want to value their thoughts and their opinions, whether it may be positive, whether it be negative? If it's negative, it's constructive criticism, maybe we need to own up to something that we're not doing right as a board. So taking in their opinion and understanding their viewpoint and their challenges gives us a better understanding on the board as far as what we're doing great and what we're not doing so well.
What would you intend that your major contribution be as a board member in this school district?
I, I think what I bring is, I am the, the face, I am the age of our stakeholders. A lot of my kids go to school here, there's, one's a middle school, one's in elementary. I still see a lot of friends here in the community who kids go to this school. I am that parent. I think I bring the community engagement from being involved at my son's school as a volunteer, is being, communicating with my son's school regularly and being just visible within the school and being visible in this community. Outside of this board, board, I'm involved with various committees at the rec center, the park and recreation center. I volunteer with them, been part of volunteering and working for them for the past 15 years. I'm involved with Commerce City Youth Athletics as a board member and as a coach, and outside of that, just supporting the high school and their events, you know. People always say, man, why do you, why do you go back? I love my school. My school gave me opportunities, and a lot of people could easily say, well, they didn't give me that. Well, I like to support my students, support my cousins, support anyone I know, and just, I have pride in my community, and I show it every day when I'm out there talking to my parents, talking to my former students, and talking to my former athletes.
Mrs. Quintana?
What is the best way for the Board of Education to be sure it stays on target, you know, in every aspect?
I think, you know, looking at our goals. Does it align with our goals? Now, we talk, we want to talk about what's best for the student. I think sometimes any board may take a little side track and get off their goal, always taking a step back and looking, are we on the right track? Are we really doing what's best for these students? So always taking a step back and seeing, whatever the discussion is, is it aligned with our goals? What is the district goals? As a district vision, inspire, educate, and empower, is what we, we are doing aligned with that?
Mr. Archuleta?
So you have a decision to make. How do you go about making such a decision?
Well, I think there's a common sense decision, and then one where I would collaborate with my peers. It's common sense, of course, I'm still going to collaborate with my peers, get their opinions, because there may be something that I'm not seeing that y'all see. As someone from a younger generation, something I might not understand that y'all understand could bring me a fresher vision. Same thing on my side, there may be something that I, I don't, that I see that y'all don't see, something that I work with every day and I see every day that y'all don't get to see. But if it's a tough decision, I'm going to sit there and collaborate with my team. When I say team, it's my fellow board members, to make sure we get this decision right. And I'm not going to make a decision just because three other members feel that's the best decision. I want to make sure we as a board weigh it out and are truly making the right decision as a team.
Mr. Thomas?
Do you like to try to get people to change? If yes, why and how?
No, it's not my job to change anybody, even work with my students, I'm not trying to change them. I'm trying to educate them, empower them to make the best decision they can, but I will never try to change them. I want to inspire them with enthusiasm, have them see different views and understand different points of views. But will I ever try to change anybody? No. That's, that's not my job to change anybody. My job is just to hopefully empower them to make better decisions.
Okay, Andrew, is there anything you would like to add to let us know about yourself?
I'm just, you know, I was a student here in Adams 14, I was a former employee, I've seen both ends of it, and I believe in this district, I believe in our students, I believe in our staff. Think right now, I think Rogers are a little rough, and we need to get back. We are such a small community, such a small district, and, but we're so divided. And to see that, and to hear other individuals from around different districts who I work with, hey, what's going on in Adams 14? Hey, what's going on? I'm tired of shrugging my shoulders, I don't know. And instead of being part of the problems, part of the solution and figure out what's going on here, my kids are students here, they deserve access to any opportunity there is, and I'm lucky I surround myself with individuals who can help provide that opportunity. But I live in this district, I think my neighbors should be, have just as much right to that opportunity as my sons do. And they know that. First question I always talk to kids, how's school going? Find out where they're at, what they're doing. But I think every student here within this district deserves the best, and I think within the past few years, we have not given them the best. And that's shame on us. So that's it.
Okay, you can wait in the community room until you get done. Ms. Quintana?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All this special treatment, I'm not used to it. Good evening.
Okay, Ms. Quintana, we will ask you eight questions, and you will have three minutes to for each question. And we'll take one at a time, I will start off, and then Ms. Quintana, then Ms. Archuleta, and Mr. Thomas will do it. So the first question I would like to ask is, why do you want the position of the board member in this district?
There's probably 100 different reasons, and of all people, I should probably have many reasons why I don't want it, having finished 18 years on the board. But I always feel that as a community member, there's something else I might be able to do to succeed in making our district the best district in the, in the state. And I want to go in there and use the talents that I've picked up over the years prior to being on the board, as, as well as the years that I was serving on the board, and use that in, that expertise to hopefully have more input in succeeding in an area that I know our kids can, can achieve, and that's academic success. I know we have the proper teaching staff, support staff to get this accomplished if we can all get of one mind and work together as one team, and that's my primary goal. I, I, I feel... I, I, I really feel that we can accomplish this. I, I, I just know it. And I think at times we've been very close, but we've stalled. I got to put on half a glass because I hate to talk to shadows, if you don't mind.
You all right?
I can see a little bit better.
Describe the board's role as it relates to the superintendent's role in the district.
You know, a while back, I invited Dr. Lee Vargas to come. And I have had the opportunity over the years to speak to many successful superintendents. Plus, I also had a lot of training through CASB, through the CDE, on what the role of a, of a board is and what the role of a superintendent is. And I really believe what Dr. Vargas said, it was a very simple statement, and we all heard it, is that, you know, how many board members does it take to change a life ball? And of course, we know that it's not the job of the, of the board to change a life ball, it's a superintendent. And I really feel that a successful superintendent is one that you allow to do what we as a community hire him to do, him or her. I believe my strategy has always been, and, and I've served under three other superintendents, was that the first year, no matter how much experience a superintendent may have, is a, is a year where they're learning, where they're building their team, where they're developing and identifying what they need to do to succeed. It's kind of like, I would put it in this manner, it's kind of like a honeymoon. You watch, you encourage, you let them move forward. By the second year, they ought to be able to really start moving in, in the direction that we or you as a board expected to move. And I think that's the kind of relationship we need with, with, with our superintendent. I also believe that the only time as a board member that, that you would express private concern, not public concern. I don't believe you should ever express public concern regarding a superintendent when we're behind the dais. But privately, I believe you should be able to go to your superintendent and have such a relationship that you could suggest their shortcomings and hope that they would alter their direction. If that doesn't, if that's not successful, then you have to follow proper policy statute and take the next alternative, which is, if, 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 I'll give you a good example. If a superintendent was allowing, was, was kind of looking the other way when a child is being molested, you know, it's your obligation to say, okay, I'm going to go and talk to the police department and have them look into this matter. You know, that's, that is a rule governed by state statute. You do the same thing with social services. If you see a child being bothered in school, you approach social security, social services if all the other protocols don't work. And, and that's the kind of relationship we should have with our superintendents.
Mr. Archuleta? So legislation establishes state policy. To what extent we'd like to be involved in legislative activity?
You have to be, or we have to be as a board or as an individual member of the board, as involved in state policy as much as possible. I served during the eight years I was on the board, I served every year as a legislative representative to, to the Board of Education. The first three years, I believe it was, both myself and Mrs. Lewis were the representatives, which meant that there, there's a number of different functions that take place mostly under the direction of CASB, in which you have to become involved in order to set the, the foundation that we take to the state legislatures as the needs in, in, in our various districts throughout the state. Also, you have to be at the state legislature, you have to take advantage of every chance you have to appear before the various education committees, both at the House and in the Senate level, and voice your concern as it relates to your district. You need to, your district needs a voice. And oftentimes, districts like ourselves, like the Sheridan's School Districts, district with our same demographics, don't have as strong a voice as some of the more affluent districts. And somebody has to go in there and voice the concern. So I believe you have to have a strong relationship with your legislators, not only your representatives from your district, from House District 32 or Senate District, I believe 25 for us, but also with the other representatives and senators. And take that one step further because I've also taken the initiative to go out and meet one-on-one in their offices with both our congressional representative as well as our United States Senator. You have to constantly just bug them in order to get the concerns of your district heard. How much should the board seek out? The views of teachers and other school employees? One of the, one of the foundations that I have had over the years is I'm always ready to listen to what our staff members have to say. The criteria for that is if they follow protocol, then by the time they're chatting with you or having a conversation with you, you know, you know that they've done the correct thing that needs to be done in order to get their voices concerned, their concerns heard. I, I, I believe you have to have a real strong relationship with all portions of, of the district staff. That includes our classified people, that grounds person, that, that, that building engineer, that person working in the, in the cafeteria, has to have the same, has to have their voice heard in the same manner as the teacher or the administrator or the technician, whoever it is. You know, everyone should be heard the same. And we should be accessible. But I've always been mindful of two things. One, from behind the dais, I've always been respectful, respectful of whoever is up here talking to us. The other thing is that I am a strong adherent because of policy governance that they need to follow the proper protocol. That's the way they get things done, even if it comes to a point where as we sit in a judicial capacity and we hear their, 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 their concerns there, you can become so biased that you cannot make the judgment once they want to use that, that alternative.
What would you intend that your major contributions be as a board member in this school district?
I really have tried, haven't always been successful, much to my own, much, I have to blame myself. I've always tried to focus on teamwork. Early on, if you were, listened to the board meetings or attended board meetings, you know, I, I constantly quoted this, this saying, there are no big I's or little u's in team. Everybody's an equal. Every board member is an equal. We have different titles, but every one of us serve as a director first and foremost, and then we serve in our various capacities of whatever, you know, you were elected by your fellow board members. I think teamwork is utmost important in being successful. Sometimes being on a team, you may not agree with all your team members or one or two of those team members, but sometimes you just got to back off and say, you know what? Let's reach a suitable compromise. Big word, compromise. And let's work for, for what is best for the only people that we should be concerned about, and that is our children. This is all about our students. This is all about their academic growth. Some grow faster than others, but the one who's the slowest, we can't ignore them because they're slow. And grasp the one that's, you know, a quick learner. We got to treat them all the same and again, stress the fact that we all work together as a team for the benefit of our children.
Ms. Quintana?
Okay. What is the best way for the Board of Education to be sure it stays on target?
Going back to what I just said. You know, one of the first things I learned as a, as a board member was that in, in the capacity of serving behind the dais, what is the major conversation that we as board members would be having? It should be focused on children, on students, on academic growth, you know. There are other things that we need to do. We got to be concerned about budget. We got to be concerned about policy. But first and foremost, if we stay focused on who we are elected to serve for, it's our kids, our students. You know, they're the ones, if we stay focused on them and, and, and kind of be of narrow mind and say, you know, this is all about the kids, you know, we're going to succeed in educating a lot of students here in Adams 14. We already have. I've seen a lot of growth because I, I follow academic growth. If you look at the wall in my office, I got charts all over. I've been tracking this for years, even before I was on the Board of Education. And if you follow, the closer you work with the children, the more you see academic growth in, in our students. And it's, you know, the, the state is recognizing that now. In fact, there was a report that came out today that noted that graduation rates amongst students is at a, at an all-time high. And, and that is, I think, a lot to do with the fact that more and more school districts are, are, are of the mindset that let's stay focused on the education of our kids.
Mr. Archuleta? Okay. So if you have a decision to make, how do you go about making such a decision?
First, I study both sides of the material that we're trying to decide on, the pros and cons. My methodology is this. I pull out my whiteboard, pros, cons, put both sides down, and start to determine which side is the strongest. And I keep that up and the more I study, and then if I don't have enough information, I'll, I'll take it one step further. I'll go out and seek more information either via the internet or I will contact the staff member through the superintendent. Always go to the superintendent first, ask him to contact the staff member for me to get more of a background on, on, on the matter that we're going to decide on. And after going through that process, I'll make a decision as to which way to vote.
Mr. Thomas?
Do you like to try to get people to change? If yes, why and how? On issues that really feel strong on, you do present your side of the equation. And you do your best to try to convince the other side that, that they should follow suit with you, that you're perhaps right. But however, not all of us think the same. We all have different, you know, ways of approaching a solution. And if a person doesn't approach that solution in the same manner that you do, you know, you vote and after you finish with the vote, you're still one team again. I'll give you an analogy from my, from my, from the perspective of my years in the ministry. You know, you can't convince everybody to believe the same way you do about your religion. But that doesn't mean you can't like that person, that you can't work together with them, that you can't associate with them, you know? You just present what you have to present and then afterwards, it's their decision to make. So the same holds true with, with matters that we have to vote on. I'll feel strong about a certain decision, a certain item, and another person will feel the opposite, but I'm not going to, to feel that I've been put down because you don't agree with me. We all have our own, you know, mindset and our own way of thinking.
Okay, that's eight questions, but...
Do I have any questions?
No.
Okay.
And you, is there something that you would like to tell us about yourself that would really help this board?
I think every individual that submitted their name for this vacancy is probably very dedicated and, and well based in their arena of expertise. Where I have focused for a number of years, and actually, I, I go back to the late 60s and throughout the 70s and on and on, has been on the education of, of our children. In an article that was written back in 72, I believe in the Rocky Mountain News, you know, I stressed in that interview that my whole mindset is about the education of, of our children, in Adams 14 primarily, but throughout the state. When I was elected to the Board of Education, the first thing I did was take advantage of every opportunity I can get, I could get a hold of to learn more and more about what I was supposed to do. CASB had a bunch of courses that they offered. I attended every one of them and was recognized that year as the board member throughout the state that made the greatest effort to get educated. The CDE offered all kinds of courses on educational matters. BOSI's offered that. Plus, I took advantage of other opportunities throughout the nation on it. I took what I had volunteered to do very seriously and I take that very seriously even to this day. The more of a foundation you have in any area, I think makes you a better person in that area. And that's, that's why I want to continue doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I don't have to go back there, do I?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss the interview process.
There has been a motion to move into executive session to discuss interview process. Is there a second?
He going to discuss? He going to discuss the interview process? So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Here in Oakville, roll call, Monica.
You just have to read, um...
Oh, okay. Move into executive session to discuss, under Colorado revised statute 24-6-402 for C to discuss interview process. We have roll call.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, we will adjourn at... Okay, we will adjourn at...
Can you grab that mic?
Six fifteen.
Okay, let's bring this back to order. First of all, I'd like to thank all the candidates for applying and taking an interest in the vacancy that we have here. But as we sat and we met in the back under advisement from legal counsel that I talked to prior to the meeting, it was brought to our attention that based on the transparency, two board members have chosen to abstain from the vote. They have a relationship with two of the candidates. In conference, in conversation with the attorney, they will abstain from voting on all candidates. So under the advisement of legal was that if they abstained from one, they must abstain from all to make it. So in reality, the only ones that could vote is Mr. Thomas and myself on this, and which again does not meet the quorum of three individuals to vote in, then it would fall due to the policy that we have that I, as board president, would make the decision. But at this time, would like to bring in the voting there. Monica, can you add on each candidate who votes? If we had at least Mr. Thomas as his opportunity to cast his vote?
So, I don't understand what you're saying.
So just ring out the names. Is there any votes for Mr. Dryling? Any votes for Mr. LaCrew? Any votes for Mr. Quintana?
Oh, so it won't be motion?
Okay, I motioned and I need a motion for voting. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have it?
Excuse me, shouldn't we have a motion for the, for them to abstain from voting? Shouldn't that be in the record?
Yes.
We do? Okay. All right, we need a motion for Connie and Timmy to abstain from voting due to relationships in the, as candidates. So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Do we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to, can you, again, there's been a motion made to vote on the candidates for the vacancy of the board.
So is it only gonna be two people voting? So then you would...
Yeah, I know, it's complicated. We have that...
So you would still do the motion, Mr. Rolla?
Right. So we need a motion for the voting of selected candidates. Do we have to do each individual? Or do we just... So we do, so, so moved?
It's just the way it is on the script. You would have to do each one individually.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the nomination for Joseph Dryling to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Okay. So who would... Any voting there? Monica?
Yeah. Are you asking for roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Rolla?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on, I need a motion to accept the nomination for Andrew LaCrew to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education. Hearing none, I guess that one's not going. I need a motion to accept the nomination for Larry Quintana.
Oh, slow up. Can we go back to Mr. LaCrew?
Okay, yeah.
Can we reread them?
Okay, I need a motion to accept the nomination for Andrew LaCrew to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education.
So moved.
Okay, then I guess I'll second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, okay. Monica?
Roll call?
What's that?
Roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
Mr. Rolla?
Nay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yea.
Okay, moving on to, I need a motion to accept the nominee for Larry Quintana to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Monica?
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Nay.
Okay. There is not a majority consensus to the vote. The board has not declared a winner and will be my duty as board president to assign one of the three candidates based on the knowledge currently needed to serve on the board to fill the 13-month position with a person who could be brought up to speed very quickly with minimum mentoring. At this time, I will appoint Joe Dryling as a member of the Board of Education Adams County School District 14. I need a motion to approve Resolution 16-015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. At this time, the Board of Education of Adams County 14 resolves as follows in that report. The Board of Education of Adams County School District 14 resolves as follows. Whereas the resignation of Robert Vaschaw from the Board of Education effective September the 13th, 2016, and whereas there is a need to fill the vacancy of the director's seat within 60 days to serve the term until the next board election of November 2017, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Adams County School District 14 appoints Joseph Dryling. Joseph Dryling as a director of the Board of Education. Discussion? Is there any discussion? We have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Board of Education. And at this time, we will give the oath of office. So, Mr. Dryling? You have the script?
Are you gonna come down?
Yeah, so the oath of office, you have the script? Can I have it, please? Okay, we should all stand, please, for this oath.
Um, it's usually you in front of him. You'll need this. Mr. Rolla?
Testing.
And if you can speak into that?
On this 18th day of October 2016, I, Joseph...
I, Joseph Dryling.
Having been duly appointed as director of Board of Education... Been, go ahead and repeat after me.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you read it again, please?
Have been duly appointed as a director of the Board of Education.
I've been duly appointed as a director of the Board of Education.
Adams 14 School District.
Adams 14 School District.
Colorado.
Colorado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will fulfill...
I will fulfill.
The performance of the duties of the office.
The performance and duties of the office.
Of school director as required.
Of school director as required.
By law and will support the Constitution.
By law and support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of Colorado, State of Colorado.
And the laws made...
The laws made.
Pursuant thereof.
Pursuant thereof.
Okay. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and your first meeting's next week.
Thank you, sir.
And if you get with Monica, give her your email. So that way she can email. This time, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Timmy, I say.
Mr. Archuleta?
Yes.
Can we have roll call?
Oh, aye. Sorry.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:25.
These are just some of the highlights of the Board of Education meeting. The board meets at 6:30 PM on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, and we hope to see you at a future meeting.